Got one on everybody's desk, and I missed yours.
Whoa.
You know how that goes.
Okay. Pasta for Patriots. Thank you. Thank you. When is it?
I didn't see you walking your dog in.
For good reason.
One more dog?
No, we still got him. I just, I had never been walking him.
Yeah, nothing, uh... I put one on everybody's desk. Chief.
Now they, they actually come along the way to whoever. They're looking at two guys. Shot. And I can be good care to people. And so, and that, it may lead to some... We don't know. The man is shooting these. Now we need to show it. Everybody's impressed. And we're ready to charge. It's, I think, the business is right. These guys? It seemed to be... This was, uh... Shouldn't be... It's only two people. Oh, it's so... Yeah, so... I hit it again. I'm taking it all the way. Shoot. Oh, he shot it. He shot it. Yeah. All the way down there. Stayed there. But I was paying up when it was a million acres. I didn't take it out from my pocket. He's still, I mean, he's still out there next time. We don't... Yeah. Exactly. Well, they were in the shop. But it was after one guy. One guy that hits. Yeah, with his hand full, hooked it on the porch. He knew his guy was porch. So he went, went inside of the porch, which is where he loved. Yeah. Just started climbing in. Like, one of them. Yep. So it will continue.
Yeah.
Denise?
I can't hear.
Uh, Denise, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Councilmember Moore? Are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
No. Okay.
Hello? 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 Sir? Uh, that's because we didn't have the speaker on. Just one moment. Okay, we're gonna do it one more time. Just one moment.
Councilmember Moore? No?
Denise? Okay, just one moment.
It's not happening?
You tried to get exactly what you did.
My pardon me?
I know, let's try it one more time. Okay? All right. Denise, just one moment. We're gonna... It worked fine the first time.
Last week? Oh, the first time?
It's just we don't get to the lines. I don't know what to do.
If it doesn't work? It's not working.
I gotta fax. I gotta... Yes. Yeah, I'm gonna do it here, okay?
Councilmember Moore? Hello? Councilmember Moore? Can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here.
We're not able to hear you. Is there any way you can turn up your phone?
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's as loud as it gets.
Okay, Councilmember Moore, if you can hear me. This doesn't seem to be working this evening. I'm not sure why. But, um, I think we need to terminate this and move on with our meeting. So we will talk to you tomorrow. Thank you.
Meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome. A. Twain Wilson is listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 2. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Akerson. Councilmember Seer. Councilmember Grab. Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Ruckregel.
Here.
And Councilmember Turner. You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, for those who may not have heard yet, our longtime city clerk, Mary Ulrich, passed this week. Services will be held tomorrow and Thursday. And we would just like for everyone to keep Mary's family in your thoughts and prayers. And I apologize, I think I said city clerk, and I meant to say city treasurer. So my apologies for that. Uh, we have one proclamation this evening for the City-County Leadership Academy.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Jake, Jake's fine.
Put the sharky bar on. The short ones are fine.
Whereas the City of Peoria is committed to partnering with other local units of government in the community it serves, and whereas the City of Peoria has, again, partnered with Peoria County to offer the Peoria City-County Citizens Leadership Academy for the ninth consecutive year. And whereas the Citizens Leadership Academy is a community education course that raises awareness of the responsibilities of local governments and their services. And whereas the Citizen Leadership Academy allows participants the opportunity to experience local government in a unique, hands-on environment through a series of two-hour sessions. And whereas many elected and appointed officials have given their time to present the sessions to these interested and involved citizens. And whereas academy participants explore public safety, law enforcement, animal welfare, and a variety of other local government responsibilities. And whereas the Peoria City-County Citizens Leadership Academy participants are deservedly graduating tonight, now therefore I, Jim Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby recognize and congratulate the Peoria City-County Citizens Leadership Academy graduates for their participation in this educational course. Uh, I can speak on behalf of the entire city council and the administration for that matter, that we appreciate all of the folks behind me who participate in this, who become more well-versed in how our government operates. And really, at the same time, we get feedback from them, and it helps us to do our jobs better, too. So we appreciate them taking the time to go through the course. It's very beneficial for all of us. And now Jennifer Engelbrecht would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jennifer Engelbrecht. I'm the Neighborhood Services Coordinator for the City of Peoria. And I, again this year, had the honor of working with Ms. Gretchen Pierceall, the Director of Strategic Communications for Peoria County, on the 2017 City-County Leadership Academy. Peoria City-County Leadership Academy is designed to expose citizens to the realities and challenges impacting local government by meeting and interacting with County of Peoria and City of Peoria elected officials and staff. Gretchen and I would like to thank all of those agencies who took the time to allow us to come in and share with us their work and duties. And we would also especially like to thank this year's participants for their commitment to improving our community. Thank you.
Councilman Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the Joint City Council and Town Board meeting held on September the 26th, 2017, and Special City Council meeting held on October the 3rd, 2017, as printed.
Uh, thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Uh, seeing no lights, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We do not have an ex, um, a consent agenda tonight, so we are at regular business. Seventeen dash two ninety is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 28 of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to traffic and motor vehicles to provide language consistent with the City of Peoria Bicycle Master Plan.
Uh, Councilmember Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I would have a few questions for, um, our Director of Public Works as it relates to this item. Uh, I'm thrilled to see it on the agenda tonight, and I know I share the sentiments of many of us around the horseshoe. Recently, I had a citizen ask me, "What about bike paths in the northwestern corridors of the city? Why does it seem that there's just so much in District 1 and 2 and out along Knoxville, Rock Island Trail? What about the other parts of the city? What are our plans to address those areas?"
So, a couple of years ago, the council adopted a bicycle master plan, which outlined which roads in town would have bicycle facilities on them. And some have on-street facilities, some have off-street trails adjacent to the streets. And our plan is, as we update roads throughout the city, is to add those bicycle accommodations per that master plan.
Uh, having lived for a short period of time out in the northwestern quadrant of the city, I can tell you it's a very dangerous place to bicycle. And, um, I don't think we can address that any too soon. As far as I'm concerned, this, this is a huge step forward for our city, and I would move to approve.
Okay, motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Ruckregel. Further discussion, Councilman Rigenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, am very enthusiastic about supporting this, and I'm excited about the increased bikability throughout the city. And as I've talked to folks, whether it's some friends at Bike Peoria or more casual bikers, I think it's important to remember that we're making these code changes, but we still need everybody to use some common sense. Because the drivers need to be aware of the bikers out there, and the bikers need to be aware that sometimes they are hard to see. So we want to be very respectful of each other out there, and this is just a good reminder for all of us to keep our eyes open for our friends on two wheels. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing no lights, we have a motion to approve. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Seventeen dash two ninety-one is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to litter and vegetation.
Uh, we did the first reading on this last week. I don't know if anyone has a comment or if we're prepared to put a motion on the floor. Councilmember Seer, motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Rigenbach. Discussion. I think, Mr. Manager, the only thing that I'd like to repeat from last week is that we want to make sure that we get this information out to folks. This is a pretty significant change. And maybe to footnote on this, we are going to, I mean, this is talking more about litter and weeds, but we are going to have a discussion upcoming about people that are just dumping garbage randomly on empty lots and elsewhere throughout the city. There was an issue with a, uh, the fee, uh, at the landfill being changed around the landfill committee. So we're, we're gonna have that, we're gonna be addressing that. I just want to bring it to people's attention that it does kind of go hand-in-hand with overall litter and cleanliness in our city. So we have a motion to approve in a second. Seeing no further discussion, please cast your ballots. Uh, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Item seventeen dash two ninety-eight is a communication from the city manager and the chief of police with a request to approve the following. A is to authorize the city manager to accept the Technology Innovation and Public Safety Grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance of the Department of Justice in the amount of $165,000. And B is to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2017 amended annual budget relating to the capital fund to recognize the receipt of a federal grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance of the Department of Justice under the Technology Innovation Public Safety Grant and the corresponding expenditures in the amount of $165,000. And if we could have two motions and votes, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, two motions it is. Councilman Grab.
Approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Euler. Is there discussion on this item? Uh, seeing none, please cast your ballots. Uh, that motion passes unanimously. And on item B, Councilman Grab.
Um, move for approval on the second ordinance as well.
Okay, motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Euler on that one as well. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Seventeen dash two ninety-nine is a request to approve and to authorize the city manager to accept the, uh, the year, seven, 2017 Body-Worn Camera Policy and Implementation Program from the Bureau of Justice Assistance of the Department of Justice in the amount of $253,000, uh, $253,500.
Thank you. I'm gonna, uh, ask Chief Mitchell if he would, uh, we're, we're aware of this, but just for our, our listening audience and others, a little information about the grant. Chief?
Good evening. By accepting this grant, it would allow the police department to move forward towards the purchasing and implementation of body-worn cameras. The phase that we would enter and continue to, actually, to continue to be in would be the planning phase, and then that, that typically lasts between one and nine months from the acceptance of the grant. Uh, we have done a lot of the, of the homework and preparation, anticipating that we would be awarded this grant. And again, this grant, uh, is a regional effort. It ties in multiple law enforcement jurisdictions from around our region. So, uh, with the acceptance of this, uh, then we would then move forward with the implementation part of this, uh, process. My best estimate is that we would be able to outfit 140 of our police officers with a body-worn camera, starting in March, give or take a couple of weeks within that. So we still have to do a lot of training with each officer that would be wearing the body cameras. Uh, they would require a full eight-hour day just to, to get familiar with, with the apparatus and the procedures and the rules before we would roll that out.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Any questions for the chief on this? Okay, thanks, Chief. Councilman Seer. It's here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, uh, one question for chief. How many officers will be wearing the body cameras, you said?
This grant would allow us to purchase up to 140. Uh, that would allow us to outfit every officer that's assigned to Uniform Patrol, including our traffic investigators, most of our supervisors that work the street. So anyone that's assigned to Uniform Patrol would be outfitted with a camera.
Would that include detective and, and the rest of the other people that are not on the street at all time?
They would just address those who are providing the basic core service of responding to calls for service. So whoever has the duties to respond for the vast majority of their daily work, they would have a body camera.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, um, will we have a overall policy done for this, for each employee that wears it? If you don't mind expanding on that?
Yes, sir. We, we will have, uh, a camera policy in place. Uh, we have the pilot program now, so we do have some, some guidelines that, uh, that we do work under. Uh, we will strengthen those guidelines, and that's also part of our clear process.
Another question. Another question I have here. Um, so as far as selection, which company that we choose to go with, will we have a final chance to hear which company that you select?
Yeah, we'll come back to council with, uh, what our process looks like, who we identify as our, our most likely vendor, and then why that was selected.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Grab.
Uh, chief, um, how many officers are currently wearing body cameras?
I have three.
Only three? Could you tell me? The devil's in the details for me on a lot of things. How does this work when it's time for the officer to go home? Does she, he, um, take the camera off, and then it gets turned over to somebody else? How's that gonna work logistically?
Uh, every, each officer assigned to Uniform Patrol would be assigned an individual body camera. So they would be required to, to maintain it, make sure it's operational, make sure it's recharged every day, and download it from the video from the prior day.
Uh, so they would be taking it home with them?
No, they're gonna bank it at the police department. So we have a, a bank of camera rechargeers. So when they come in, their videos will be downloaded automatically and will also be charged. So when they come back to work, they just pick it up, attach it, and they can go to, go do their work.
So there might be a Jerry Mitchell body cam, which you're responsible for and nobody else? It's yours. And, uh, we, we're looking at, um, most everybody who's out on the street interfacing will be having one of these, um, by around March or so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Akerson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in reading through the legislation text that accompanied this request, um, my impression is that the policy and some of the guidelines will be established as time goes on now. And, um, part of this money is to help facilitate that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and in the text, it describes that this is a cooperative effort, which you just mentioned, um, many different police departments, the Peoria County Sheriff's Office, Peoria Heights, Bartonville, Chillicothe, East Peoria, and the Park District are all gonna be participating in this collective understanding of how the body cameras will be used. Is that correct as well?
Each, each jurisdiction will be responsible for how they implement it and for whatever rules that govern their agency.
Okay. So, um, I'm wondering, is there any plan to have any citizen engagement in the actual formulation of the policy? Have, has that been brought up? And if so, um, how many citizens would participate, and how would they be selected?
My team is nodding at me that, yes, that will, they will be included, but to what capacity, I don't know.
Would, would you be willing to or able to follow up with us on that to let us know so that, um, you know, if citizens are interested in being more engaged in the policy development of this, um, I think it would be good for them to know that. Or it would be good to, you know, publicize so that people who have strong opinions about the ramifications of body cameras, um, I would love to see, you know, significant citizen engagement.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, anyone else for the chief? Or I would accept a motion? Councilman Grab, motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Ruckregel. Seeing no other lights, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Madam Clerk?
We're at unfinished business seventeen dash two ninety-five. Is a communication from the city manager and director of public works with a request for the following. A is to approve the selection process and direct staff to enter into an agreement with Heartland Parking in the amount of $496,512 to install and implement new parking access and control equipment for the four city parking decks. B is to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2017 amended annual budget relating to the capital fund to recognize the receipt of $158,988 from the Technology Deck escrow account and the corresponding expenditure to replace the control, control equipment. And if we could have two motions and votes on these also, it would be appreciated.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Manager or Director Reese, do you wanna do, give an overview of this one real quick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what I would like to do is turn the floor over to Director Reese. I think we, we put together, uh, as one of the report backs in the budget, some information, um, on this item specifically. And, um, I'll ask the director to kind of summarize and walk through some of that if we could, and, um, we can answer your questions. Just by way of introduction, uh, what we're talking about are the four parking decks that we have in downtown and replacing the access controls into those parking decks. They were built, um, many years ago as, and the way that the, the city at the time structured the deals, uh, that was part of the building construction. There were, uh, the construction of the parking deck was paid for out of the property tax increment. Uh, so the, the debt service on many of those parking decks has been paid over time by the, the TIF increment that was generated from... increment that was generated from the buildings and from downtown, from the businesses and buildings that we have in downtown. So I'll let the director kind of walk through some of the general operating questions that we have, and then we'd be happy to answer any other additional questions council has this time.
Thank you. Director Reese.
Thank you. So the parking decks that we have are the Jefferson Deck, the Twin Towers Deck, the Niagara Deck, and the Tech Deck. The only one that has remaining debt service on it right now is the Tech Deck, which part of that cost share, or the share of the construction was, it was shared with ICC and Caterpillar at the time to build that deck. And that has a debt service each year of around eight hundred thousand dollars remaining on it, with five hundred and fifty thousand roughly of those dollars coming from TIF funds that are generated. When we looked at our operating costs for the decks, each year our operating costs run about a million dollars to run all four decks. And our revenues come in at a high of two million, but then in two thousand seventeen, we're projected for about one and a half million dollars. In two thousand fourteen, we saw a significant reduction in parking deck revenues, and it basically directly ties with vacancy rates in downtown Peoria and businesses. So we saw an increase as there was some movement in downtown, the parking rates or the parking revenues declined. But that still generates, if you just look strictly off that, we use about two hundred thousand dollars of that revenue to offset the, two hundred and forty-seven thousand to offset the debt service for the Tech Deck. And so if you don't pay attention to the TIF funds, we're creating a revenue of about a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in two thousand seventeen to the general fund from the parking decks. But we do utilize the TIF funds for that half a million dollar payment and for our capital costs, so any deck repairs that we might have. In the high in two thousand fourteen, we were generating about six hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue to the general fund through this. Just to look at it, we, the construction cost for the decks, if we were to rebuild them today, are roughly about thirty-eight million dollars to build those four decks. So we went through an exercise just to see what that would generate in property tax if they were brand new and somebody was willing to pay thirty-eight million dollars for them. And right now, at our current tax rate of a dollar twenty-one per hundred dollars of assessed value, that would generate about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in the general fund. And with that, I just, if anybody has any questions?
Okay. Questions for Director Reese? Or a motion? Councilmember Seer, motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously and on item B. Is there a motion? Councilman Graham, motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Regenbach. Is there discussion on this? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We are at the policy session seventeen dash three hundred. Communication from the city manager with a request for a policy session on the creation of a city policy for the use of sales tax incentives in special service areas.
Okay. We have a motion to go into policy session by Councilman Regenbach, seconded by Councilman Euler. Please cast your ballots to go into policy session. That motion passes unanimously. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. At the request of Councilmember Ruck Regal, there was a request made to have a policy session concerning SSAs and the use, special service areas, and the use of sales taxes as part of the SSAs. Assistant City Manager Chris Siddy has put together some policy questions to have a discussion with you this evening, and I'd like to turn the floor over to the Assistant City Manager to walk through those discussions with you.
Mr. Siddy.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Special service areas has been around for a while as a tool of, that's available to municipalities or home rule governments to encourage certain types of development and provide special services, which is why they're called that. It's, they are dictated by state law, and they are both, they're really an economic development tool. Traditionally, SSAs have been used kind of as, and oftentimes they're referred to as business improvement districts. So the more traditional method of utilizing special service areas, or at least the way they started off being used, was that you had an area that wanted to band together to provide certain types of services that the government wasn't providing, like an extra layer of security, some landscaping work, or things that were kind of in maybe the public way, but something that the city wasn't going to be able to provide, like additional street sweeping or sidewalk snow shoveling or things like that. And that's always kind of been the traditional use of special service areas in business areas along, in business corridors. But they also can become powerful tools for economic development, and the city has had a recent history of utilizing special service areas and the taxation that's behind them to create some economic development opportunities for one way or the other. So just in the last few years, we've used it at Junction City in order to finance the construction of a new intersection at Knoxville. I don't know if that has a name where that intersection is, right there near the Rock Island Trail Bridge. We've used it to help support the financing of the Louisville Slugger complex. And then also, we've used it at Westlake, originally as a property tax SSA to subdue some of the improvements at Westlake, and then later they petitioned to change that to a sales tax SSA to complete the renovations there at Westlake. The policy question before you is really specific to the use of sales tax. What really, that's special services allow, the petitioner allow the city to do is create a very localized additional taxation that applies only to that small geographic area. And it can either be a property tax, it could be a sales tax, it could be a hotel tax, which is the case out at Louisville Slugger, that there's a hotel tax SSA. Tonight, we really, we just wanted to get some feedback and direction regarding sales tax SSA. When this first was brought to our attention back in two thousand and fourteen, and we processed through the Westlake sales tax SSA, council actually engaged in the conversation about a policy. It was determined, I believe, that, given that it is a very flexible tool, that it should have very flexible use, and no policy was created as a result of that, of that policy discussion. But now, as you know, we have a couple of others that have come up and more that we imagine might happen, and so this might be a good time to reengage in that, in that conversation. I would point you just to a couple of questions that we outlined in the council memo, and then I would turn it over then to you to manage the discussion. One, is the city council comfortable with utilizing sales tax SSAs as a tool to generate investments? This is not something we're required to do. It's obviously good for the development community to know what we're willing or are not willing to do so that, so that they can proceed in putting their plans together. Should sales tax SSAs be limited to the redevelopment of existing properties, such as what happened with Westlake, or for the new, or allow for new construction, completely new projects? What SSA ordinances, while SSA ordinances need to propose time and taxation limitations, there are no maximums required by state law, and you as a council could set those maximums yourself and say, we're not going to accept anything that's longer than X number of years, or we won't accept something greater than this percentage of taxation. One of the suggestions or one of the ideas that had surfaced back in two thousand and fourteen was that a development would first need to establish a property tax SSA and then a sales tax SSA later. That's still an option for you all to consider. Are there particular circumstances in which a sales tax SSA is warranted? Would we want to limit ourselves to the use of them in only specific situations, or do you want to retain the flexibility for things you might not have quite imagined would be down the road? And then, should sales taxes be limited to a common property owner, or can a commercial corridor with multiple owners apply for the program? Again, this is about sales tax SSAs, not about property tax SSAs. We're not looking to limit those. Those tend to be much less, I guess, controversial. One way or the other, in commercial areas, you know, that property tax gets passed along in some way to the consumer, but this is a little bit more of an acute issue when it comes to the sales tax rate. So again, if a group of owners wanted to propose a sales tax, as was originally contemplated in the Downtown Development Corporation in some of their initial work on an SSA for downtown, was to petition for an increase in the sales tax by a quarter percent. They've since abandoned that as a concept, but it was still out there. So that would be helpful for staff to know whether those issues are of concern to the council as well. So with that, I will leave it to you to ask me any questions you might have.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruck Regal.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for your work on putting this together. I know you, I've had quite a few conversations on SSAs recently, and a couple of questions on, again, let's talk about the sales tax SSA. In the process that we're talking about, we've got a process in there if there are registered voters within the SSA to be able to have an objection period of sixty days. Is it anticipated, then, that there would be an objection period, or I guess a further input after the public hearing before the actual vote on the SSA would be put in place? And I guess my question is this. In an area where there would not be registered voters, and we're looking at a sales tax increase, I think that I would rather err on the side of making sure we have as much public input and much public dialogue before we ever raise sales taxes. And so I'd like to see, I guess personally, that sixty-day waiting period as well, because right now, what we have in front of us kind of doesn't address the issue of if there are no registered voters, can that vote take place the night of the public hearing, or is there, I guess, additional time for voters, or for citizens to weigh in, since they are the ones that would be paying that tax?
So this is how I understand, and I'd ask Corporation Counsel Lice to jump in if I start, if I'm wrong. But it's an objection period for the intent, the express purpose of determining whether fifty-one percent of the people affected by this, you know, oppose. And the law is clearly written that that is the owners of the property within the geographic area or the residents, as judged by them being elected, you know, are registered voters. I think it would be problematic, I mean, the council can, you know, set up a policy where it wants to hear from people. I think you would be hard pressed to find fifty-one percent of, if you said, well, you have fifty-one percent of the people of Peoria opposed this, you'd have to have fifty-one percent of the registered voters in Peoria to, you know, sign a petition, which would be incredibly difficult, if not impossible. So I think you'd have to come up with a way of, that's what the public hearing is for, is that anybody, regardless of their connection to the property, can make that statement.
And I guess, in that, I'm not looking for fifty-one percent of the full voters of the city, but what I think is, we need to, again, allow some extra time in there, and that'd be sixty days, so it mirrors up with if there would be registered voters, for the public to be able to contact their council members about that. Because again, I think that the public, anytime that we're looking at raising a sales tax on the public, we need, I'd rather err on the timeframe to be able to get them in. In the conversation on this too, one of the, you know, obviously, we know that the reasons for SSAs are, you know, to add infrastructure, new or to maintain some of the infrastructure that's there. It might be marketing to be able to help businesses. But also, encouraging development is one of the terms that we use in here, but that can be fairly broad. And I know what my definition of that means, and I think we probably all around the council have a little bit different definition of that. For staff, does that mean, I guess what I'm wondering is, how much of that is new development? How much of that would be based on economic shift? How much of that is bringing in industry or a business that isn't available here? What does the term economic development in this sense mean towards staff?
Well, I think that's one of the reasons we ask this as a policy question of the eleven of you. I think that it's, that's, it's an excellent point as to, you know, when, when does this happen? So in the case of, I will use, you know, to not talk about, you know, the one that was under consideration, but the Louisville Slugger project as an example of, it's completely new construction, and it, but it was certainly, I would, I think it certainly qualifies economic development. It's bringing something to the community that isn't already here. It is generating some economic vitality. I think that once we get past that as a, you know, then almost anything could be probably considered, any new development, whether it's something like the Portillo's, as we've been discussing, which is a large and attractive retail operation, but anything that adds jobs, any, you know, any retail establishment, even if, you know, could, you know, so that's what we are seeking, some guidance from the council regarding how, you know, what you would consider worthy of these sorts of, this sort of incentive.
Okay. On page three, point one, we have a comment in here that few customer, and it talks about that customers are, you know, aware that they're paying this, and that if they don't like it, that they can go other places. You and I were recently at an event, and I brought over somebody and asked him right there, were you aware that you were paying point seven five percent more? And the answer was no. And I started to ask people recently about that. And so I guess my concern on this is it almost seems like a judgment call that's placed in here, because I would, I would gather to say that not a lot of people know, because it has a sales tax line on the receipts, and they don't know where those sales taxes are going. If there were a separate line item that said, you know, going to XYZ project, then they may know whenever they look down. Everybody pays the final end of the bill. But just, you know, I think it becomes fairly easy to say, well, if somebody doesn't like it, they don't pay for it. But if they don't know about it, and the farther we get away from it, especially when we're talking about things that could be effective for thirty years, the citizens may forget or may not know. We've got new citizens who don't know that they're paying an added fee on there. And with that, I think we also mentioned here, there's a comment about they can go some, if they don't like it, they can obviously go someplace else, and we say it a little nicer in here. But that may or may not be exactly true, because for the citizen who may need to shop in a very close proximity of their house, there may be an economic hardship that an increase in sales tax might place on them. Not to say that we, you know, that that is the situation in every case, but I think, again, a broad statement of, well, if they don't like it, they can go other places, may not take into effect everybody who may be in that neighborhood and around there. Fifty-three Chicago SSAs, and digging into quite a few of those, I saw, I believe, zero that were for one particular property. They were mainly larger areas. Just, it was of interest to me on there. And then I guess, just one, one final question if you might want to address, and it's, it's our conversation here on the financial impact. It says SSAs are a method of incentivizing development that does not impact city revenues. And I could maybe go along with that if our citizens had a wallet that, when they spent money, it was an unending stream of money. But our citizens have only so much that they can spend, and they have to work within that budget. So I guess if you can talk a little bit about this line, because to me, I don't quite see that, because I think that money that's paid one place is money that our citizens can't play another place, and that might mean an additional purchase somewhere else. So if you wouldn't mind just kind of addressing, I guess, that statement a little bit and how you see that statement.
Certainly. And that's a completely legitimate point, and when I wrote that, it wasn't intended to, so, and that's, that's an excellent way of looking at it. You're right, there's only so many dollars in a community, and those that then go towards paying for this special service tax are, you know, the couple of extra pennies or the, maybe a quarter that gets spent at a particular place, or more if you're, if you're talking about a hotel room, you know, is, you know, certainly then a quarter you're talking about a hotel room, you know, is, you know, certainly then a quarter or a dollar that isn't spent somewhere else. I don't know how, though, the, that would be an argument against the city itself raising its own sales taxes, or its own property taxes, for the same reason. So you kind of, we end up getting put a little bit in a box with that, but I completely understand what you're saying. I don't know that, I don't know if I have an answer to it, other than this is a mechanism that's available, this additional taxation's available, and it's the decision of the, of the city council whether to adopt it or not.
Great. And I would follow up with, with agreeing with your statement that you made several points, that property SSAs and sales tax SSAs are extremely different. And that's why I think that it's good to be able to talk about the sales tax SSA, because this does have very big implications for our citizens on a day-to-day basis, as they do their shopping, hopefully locally here in Peoria. So thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions for Mr. Setti? Councilmember Montalongo.
Thank you, Mayor. If anything, I'd just like to make a couple of comments about SSAs. And from my experience, both a term at-large and a term at district now into my third term here, it's been kind of my experience from throughout the city. I've seen many parking lots tend to get really used, where we see less investment in the parking lots until the last minute, till you start seeing the blacktops all faded away, you start seeing holes in the parking lots. And I think it's, the business owners or owners tend to try and get everything that they possibly can before they put something new into that parking lot, and sometimes the buildings as well. So for example, when we used the SSA over at Westlake, what did that provide us? It provided a brick paver parking lot, it provided landscaping, it provided a whole new image for that particular location. I think people might remember back 10 years on what Westlake did look like. A huge improvement. I have monthly meetings going on five years now, and the feedback from the people there who attend my meeting, they're saying they're, they're happy that, and most of them who live nearby that area are happy to pay that additional tax, to be able to get something quality, something that looks maintained very well, and it's very appealing to look at. So that's, those are the positive things that come out of a special service area. So I'm, you know, it was somewhat of a, a new thing, a test to see if it works out. And I think in that particular case, it proves itself. I think as well, when we have a development that may not happen for many different reasons, if the particular business is going to be more of a regional draw, it's not necessarily the same people, you know, we're addressing shift coming from one part of town to the other, but actually, it's going to be a regional draw, and it may take some additional dollars to make that, that business happen. That's when I think it's, it may be supportive. Concerning the new development at Portillo's, I've brought it, this discussion up many times already at my monthly meetings, and as well at neighborhood associations, and the feedback I get is, as long as that tax is not going to everybody, to all the stores that are having to fund that additional tax, it's only going to be at that addition, that one restaurant or location, they're okay with it. So that's, that's the feedback that I've received from, from the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions, comments, or discussion? I have Councilman Riegenbach, and then Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been a big supporter of SSAs, clearly. In the 3rd District, the East Bluff Neighborhood Housing Service SSA, real estate tax-based, provides a clear and defined service for the community. And in fact, every year, we require EB&amp;HS to come before us with a work plan. We have access to the books, so we know how the money is being spent. We quantify it in pretty specific manners. The Junction City SSA, another property tax-based SSA, which I've been a strong supporter of, provided the, the much-needed traffic signal there at Donovan Park in Junction City, and will have a sunset provision as well. In 2014, I asked quite a few questions about the Westlake sales tax-based SSA, and was persuaded to support it at that time because of the work being done on the, on the parking lot, a very tangible check-the-list item, and the prospect of a new store coming into the facility. I guess as we discuss this, it's kind of appropriate that we're also discussing the budget, and we're looking at all the tools and means available to us as a council to maximize revenues. I think at our last policy session on the budget, we said we wanted to keep the sales tax off that list, that that was something we weren't interested in raising. So it's somewhat ironic now that we're gonna, that we're having this discussion, and we're gonna let a developer who has a vested interest in his properties clearly come and raise the sales tax, which we, as a body, are hesitant to raise. Where I'm going with this is that the sales tax is a very critical resource for us as a city, and I said it in 2014, and I'll say it again, I don't think it's appropriate for us to dish that out, because now, if, if there would be a time that the city needs to raise the tax, then everything is just exponentially going up. So looking at the, the Portillo's piece of it, I, that's got a little different spin on it, since it's got a specific project that's new to the area, that wouldn't cause shift from another shopping center, perhaps. So that, that has a different look and feel to it, to me. But Councilman Ruck Regal's observation of the 53 SSAs in Chicago, and not one of those is for a single property, I think that's something we also need to, to weigh as we have this discussion. There's a lot of moving parts on this, clearly, as we try to optimize the economic development tools that we have available. But I would concur that perhaps after the public hearing, that there is a time that the vote doesn't take place the same day, or that there could be the 60-day window that Councilman Ruck Regal alluded to, because, let's face it, for a lot of folks, tonight's going to be the first time they hear about it, and they probably won't think about it again until the public hearing. So I'm curious to hear what my colleagues have to say on this, but those are my big concerns at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Setti, for leading us in this discussion. It's an important one, and thanks for moving over, so I could see you. I appreciate that. You know, in the past, I have been supportive of SSAs, and I support using them as an incentive to do things like we did in Westlake. I mean, we use that tool to incentivize the property owner to do something that we've been pushing as a policy, to have green, sustainable, permeable, paver infrastructure consistent with our CSO policy. So I thought that was a good use of an SSA as a tool to get that done. Additionally, I, I support having it in a limited area. I know Councilman Ruck Regal questioned whether or not it should be done for just one property and compared, or what's done in Chicago, which Councilman Riegenbach just brought up, that it's, an area is bigger than just one property. But like in the case of Portillo's, I'm more supportive of it being in a limited area, because in that case, that higher tax is only going to be charged on people that are going to Portillo's. So, I mean, if they don't want to pay the higher tax, they can go anywhere else to get a hot dog or a sandwich. So I think that's a good thing. And that's one of the reasons why I'm leaning towards supporting the SSA with that, with that specific proposal. One thing to clarify some of the questions that have raised, have been raised, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Assistant City Manager, is that SSAs on an, for an increased sales tax cannot be charged on groceries? Is that correct?
It can only be charged on the thing, I don't believe even our, that, that is correct. It wouldn't also be charged on any titled goods, you know, boats or cars, motorcycles or campers, things like that. It can only apply to what I believe our general sales tax applies to, and that does not include groceries or pharmaceuticals.
So that, to me, that caveat, or that prohibition in the state law, I think is important, because for people that may be in the predicament that Councilman Ruck Regal referred to, where they don't have a choice, and they have to get groceries, or they have to get medical supplies or pharmaceutical supplies, an SSA that's based on an increased sales tax would not be charged for those people for those purchases. Correct?
That is correct.
But, you know, again, with any economic development tool, I think it's important that we do set parameters, and we have criteria set up. So I do hope that we continue this discussion, and once the council agrees as to what that criteria should be, you know, we publicize that, we let the public know that, and we let all the developers know that, and potential developers, because I think it's important that we have criteria established for any development that we do, so people know what decisions we're making, what our criteria is, and we can be consistent in what we do. So those are my thoughts at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ruck Regal.
Yeah, just a couple of final thoughts on this, and I thought our policy session really was about SSAs and sales, the sales tax SSA in kind of general. I didn't know that we were going to get down to project level. I, that would have brought, I think, a lot of different questions, and so I'm gonna, just to kind of, I guess, talk a little bit there, because we're, we seem to be talking about the elasticity of price, that if somebody wants it, they can go to a particular prop, you know, we're talking here now evidently about Portillo's, but, you know, and let's use that as an example, since that has been brought on the floor. There's another way to do that. And I'm a guy who actually operates in some SSAs in other cities, so I'm very familiar with how this project works, and as a developer and as a restaurateur, I've, I've seen this from a lot of different realms. So you're talking to a guy who has some experience in this. If a 1%, because everybody, at the end of the day, pays that final bill with tax included, if the elasticity is there to where the consumer doesn't mind paying 1%, which is what I seem to be hearing around here, then let's do a 1% menu increase, and let, let it flow through to the rent of the property that way. Because that saves it, because we're not talking about a Portillo's here, we're talking about an area. And what we forget is, that Portillo's may or may not, gosh, we want, if they decide to open up, I would love for them to have a longevity in Peoria here. But if they close, this SSA we're talking about, as proposed, is a 30-year SSA. So it's a 30-year commitment for whatever is sold on that property. So I think when we start making a policy conversation, as we are doing now tonight, about one particular entity, we've probably geared away from what we really ought to be talking about, which is SSAs and sales tax, and how we, as a community, want to go forward with them. I hate to see us making policy because of one example. Thanks.
Councilman Riegenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I was just rereading the six questions that you prepared for us, Mr. Assistant City Manager, and I think one of them, I'm not sure I have the answers to all six of them personally tonight, but the, the time limit, I think, is critical, because in the examples I gave earlier, the EB&amp;HS SSA, for example, every 10 years it has to be renewed. So a 20- or 30-year term definitely gives me heartburn, but a 10-year term is something I think would be more palatable. Again, thinking in terms of the real estate, I think that first question is one that the council really needs to be able to wrap our arms around, to give you direction, is, are we comfortable using sales tax SSAs, period? Because if the answer to that is no, then the timeframe and everything else is pretty much mute. But if we, if we're willing to look at that, I think we're finding ourselves in the situation now, by saying it's all on a case-by-case basis, it does make it more project-based rather than policy-based, and that's an unfortunate place to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Grab.
Manager Setti, on the third page of the memo to the council, under number one, paragraph number one, the last sentence states, "Individuals who are opposed to paying the additional sales tax can avoid those businesses." What does that mean?
Well, in the, in the case, and I think this is what Councilman Ruck Regal was getting to earlier, is that, in the, and we, now, at some point down the road, if everything's got an SSA, it makes it a lot harder to do. But in the, in the particular case of Westlake is an example, and I realize, we don't have enough SSAs to not, like, talk about specific projects to give you the context of the issue. But if you are opposed to paying the extra .75% sales tax at Westlake, at Guitar Center, or at Five Guys, or any of those businesses, you have a choice not to go there as a citizen. I think what Councilman Ruck Regal was pointing out, and quite rightly, is, most people don't know. And after, after a while, after the, the news of it wears off, most people, because most people don't walk into a business and look at the price and ask someone, "What's the sales tax here?" And, and so there is, you know, some of that, you know, that's at play. But, but the, but it is also very true that you are allowed to avoid it if you, you know, if you don't want to. If you don't want to pay the additional 1% at one burger restaurant, you can go to another burger restaurant.
When I go to dinner with Councilmember Montalongo to Biagi's, and I get the check, I ask, "Is this a reasonable price?" Same thing when I go to Agatucci's in the 2nd District, "Is this a reasonable price?" You know, I think we're getting a little too policy-wonkish about this whole thing. I think the consumer is smart enough to discern whether or not they want to shop at a given store. Let me ask you this, just, I'm gonna play the devil's advocate. I wonder what would happen if every business that has an SSA on it had to put up a sign on the door before you go in, saying, "If you frequent this establishment, you're subject to blank percent increase because we have an SSA here." Do you think that would make a difference, if they saw it?
I have no idea. I don't, I think it would depend on the quality of the product that you were, and whether you could get it somewhere else. I think that...
I wonder if the city council thinks that if we need to do this for Portillo's or any place else, that that would be a wise thing to do, to give a heads-up to our uneducated consumers. Now, I'm being facetious here, but we seem to know so much more than the consumer. For the uneducated consumer who goes to Biagi's all the time, he or she needs to know that they're being subject to an additional charge. Why don't we think about that? I'm serious. I mean, the devil is always in the details on this type of thing. And I know that if I had... And I know that if I had a businessperson in my district who wanted to have a better-looking parking lot, ornamental lighting, et cetera, wanted to do some really cool things, and they approached me about it, I would probably do the same thing Councilman Montalongo's doing. Help the business in my district. But let's remember one thing. Every business is subject to certain disciplines. Discipline imposed by the market. And if they're going into an establishment, toy store or wherever, and they think the price is out of whack, for whatever reason, maybe it's this additional add-on, they don't have to go there. I just think this is a policy wonk discussion, more than anything. Because I think the ultimate decider on this, I don't mean to sound like ex-President Bush, is the customer, the consumer, who makes an assessment as to whether or not the value is worth the price when they go into a business. But, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to having a sign put up on the door as well, with a disclosure to the customer that, you know, we have a special service area here that is subject to an additional 1% tax increase, sales tax increase here. So I understand what everybody's saying, but that's how I feel about it, if that makes any sense to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Aikerson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to been a firm supporter of business improvement districts, or in the state of Illinois, they're called special service areas. And the reason I've been a supporter is because I think that collectively, businesses who are part of an SSA save money if we utilize them the way that they were and are intended to be used. And I'll give an example of Main Street. If Main Street's flower baskets were watered by one company that all the businesses on Main Street agreed was a value-added to Main Street, and the company that they collectively agreed upon said, "We will water the baskets on Main Street for $100 a run," or something. And the businesses evaluated that price and thought, "Well, I might be able to get somebody to come and water my basket for $35, but, you know, in general, we're going to get all of them watered for three times that." Versus $30 here, $30 here, $30 here, $30 here, and $100 spread out between 25 businesses is less than a one-shot contract with a vendor. And special service areas are supposed to act that way. It's, they collectively decide what services, in addition to what the city provides, these areas want to see happen, and then they receive the value because they're sharing the expense. So it'd be the same thing with sidewalks, snow removal, the same thing with maintenance of any sort of landscaping. And in particular, the ones that I'm familiar with, in the Chicago area, and in Michigan, and in the state of Washington, in other places, they're managed by non-for-profits. So I'm kind of witnessing some sort of discrepancy in how these were originally intended and how they were conceived. And I would prefer policy sessions that were, gave us much more information. I mean, I would like to see, how does the city of Evanston do this? How does the neighborhood Lakeview in Chicago do it? How does Bothell do it? How does, and then I would like to hear from some of the businesses that are involved in this, so that we can hear that they actually believe that they've saved money, it's value-added. So I'm kind of getting confused here as to what the resistance is. Or maybe I'm not really confused. I think it has a lot to do with how well-educated we are about what their, what these SSAs really are. So I would like to have you come back. If we're going to make some serious decisions about whether SSAs continue in the city, I think we need to have some much more concrete information about what they are, what they're not, and the ones that have been super-successful, how they've been managed, run, and how much they really cost. Because we're not getting that. We're kind of, you know, kind of thinking it up here on the fly, and I don't think that we really understand what they are. So I'm a little bit disappointed in the lack of information, and I really, I think we all deserve to get a better overview of what we are being asked to settle on as far as policy is concerned. I'm really disappointed in this, actually.
Councilman Grab?
Well, you know, I think one of the giant in the room here is there's a perception that this is really unadulterated corporate welfare. I think that's the, that is implicit in the analyses many people give this. They don't really understand it. They think that we're providing corporate welfare. And we're not. So, you know, ultimately, the consumer can decide where he or she wants to go. If they want to go to Emo's for a hot dog, although they're closing up here pretty soon, if they want to go to Sonic Burger for a hot dog, if they want to go to Portillo's for a hot dog, so be it. I mean, they're going to assess ultimately what they pay and whether they think that's reasonable. That's, again, I think that is how it works in the real world. And I have no problem, again, if we think something nefarious is happening to the consumer, that we're sneaking something past the consumer, doing some kind of corporate welfare crime, put a sign up on the door. You can mandate that if you want to. Put a sign up on the door stating, "This establishment assesses an additional tax," and see if that makes a difference. I don't think it would, as long as the pricing is done correctly for the quality of the good or service being dispensed. It's the old economics teacher in me coming out. And so, thank you, Mayor. That's the last comment I have. I do think you're right, though, Councilor Aikerson, there are many places in our state where we love to go that successfully use these. And, you know, the Lakeview area, for example, in Chicago, Evanston area, et cetera, Arlington Heights, they do a wonderful job. These are places we want to go. They look great, goes beyond the basic, and people want to shop there. So, you know, let's remove this corporate welfare stigma from this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things I want to point out, as we've had a lot of discussion over the last year or two especially, over the fact that we need to grow our tax base, and that's the only way that we're going to fix our future ongoing budget challenges. And to do that, we have to have tools in our toolkit to be able to attract new business, and this is one of those tools. So I think we need to be careful how much we limit those tools and our ability to accomplish those goals. If we're bringing in something that's going to be a regional draw, that's going to bring in people and businesses from other communities, those are the things that are going to grow our tax base, and we have to remain flexible and keep an eye on our ability to accomplish that. In the case that, and to kind of piggyback off what Councilwoman Aikerson mentioned, I think that we need to be able to better understand what other communities are doing to have an understanding of how we are going to be competitive in those atmospheres. Obviously, this isn't something that we do every day, and this is something that we need to have a great understanding when we get into this business in attracting business into our community and growing that tax base is exactly how we're going to accomplish that and what it is we're going to need to come to the table with. Because we sit around for years on end and talk about all of the opportunities that have gone to another city that we missed out on. Well, what could we be doing better to attract those businesses here, and how are we going to change that trend? So we really have to be cognizant of, I guess, what our competition is and what they're doing and how we're going to address that. Meanwhile, being very open with the public about how we're accomplishing that, and I don't think Councilman Grab's point is bad at all about the fact that we, you know, put the sign out there and say that this area is collecting an extra sales tax. We wouldn't do that to a homeowner if we were going to go around and do a lighting project and increase their taxes to accomplish that. They would all be well-informed of the fact that their property tax is going to be increased to cover the cost of that project, and I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do that here. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mayor. I think Councilman Grab hit the nail on the head, and I understand why Councilman Ruckregal's bringing this particular sales tax up in, and, you know, somewhat on the eve of the Portillo's coming forward here. And it's a legitimate concern that he has, and something that I'm glad we're talking about now. Especially like the comments made by Councilman Euler as well, saying, you know, we got to grow our city. For the past several years, and got this started, actually, with the Assistant City Manager, and getting a business roundtable put together in that particular area several years ago, our business roundtable, which we've been planning and working together and have the area named the Uptown District. What we're trying to do is grow more business into that area, more retail, more restaurants, more people come in to stay the night, entertainment, et cetera. This particular restaurant, which is a sought-after restaurant franchise in certainly Illinois and getting to be across the US, is going to be a draw, even if it is for a few years or so. It's still going to be a draw. Not only is it going to help that one business, but it's going to help all the businesses in that area, and it's going to be a positive revenue for the city. And, you know, this is something that I've been working on for a long period of time, so I kind of, you know, try not to take it personal. And, you know, one of the comments that Councilman Regenbach meant, or said, was trying to make this more of a policy and not project-based. I think we can still make this project-based, and if there's concerns from any of the council people, I certainly will sit down with all of you and listen to what your comments are. I'm not trying to do anything to hurt any of the taxpayers by any means, and trying to work with our city here to come up with the right amount to make this fair and equitable for our community. That's what I'm working on. So I think this is going to be a good thing for our community, the Portillo's. The exact amount, I don't think we know yet, and I'm certainly open to having that conversation with the rest of my colleagues. Thank you.
Councilmember Ruckregal?
We've got two separate discussions going on on the floor here, and one is about a property tax SSA. And that's where the property owners pay the property tax. You increase your property tax because you're going to go into a pool to be able to do mutually beneficial things. And I don't think that's what's in question here from our conversations. It's the sales tax base, and you know what? I will use the term corporate welfare. And here's why. And I don't want to, I don't want it to appear personal, Councilmember Montalongo, maybe I've missed your phone call, I haven't seen one come through, to talk about this, and this is an important piece, but here's the deal. This particular piece of property becomes more valuable when it has a 30-year, 1% on any sales tax, because let's say, just for an example, you've got $750,000, two pieces of property available to sell or to buy. Which one are you going to buy? The one that has a 1% that comes back to you? So the other piece to this is, this is a free-market economy. We had a Nirvanis not too long ago, they built a wonderful, beautiful, brand-new building, and generates beautiful sales tax for our city. And I believe they came and asked for some help on a turn lane, and were turned down to it, had to pay for that themselves. Private business should be doing things privately. At the end of the day, this piece of land, which we're asking the citizens, since we've now made it about this project, to actually pay for through their sales tax dollars, we don't get 1% back on their P and L to the city. The end of the day, that parcel of land with its improvements the citizens have paid for gets to be either transferred to their heirs or gets to be sold and gets, so when, I'd be careful by saying that this is not a corporate welfare. When we look at champagne, no incentive. When we look at mischwaka, no incentive. When we look at fishers, no incentive. There was one on 80 that came through, and the city council passed an incentive for it and immediately came back and undid it because it was so dispopular. Just because our friends a little east of here may have done an incentive for it, you know, I'm a big fan of Portillo's. Eat there when I'm in Chicago, and I look forward to having them here in Peoria. But I think that we need to talk about the SSA, sales tax here, because we're getting it confused with the property sales tax. Very different things.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to make a couple of quick comments, just because we're going into round four on some of these, and I just thought I'd make a couple of comments before we went into round five. Let me just say, first of all, the conversation, I think, is a good conversation, and not just because there's a development coming to town that's asking for something here. I mean, clearly, I'm not extremely disappointed with the foundation for tonight's discussion, because I think that the staff is trying to gauge the council's willingness to really explore this, really put some meat on it or not. Sounds like some people is not. So I think, I think that this is a good, I mean, you know, we had a discussion in 2014 that really didn't get any traction with a couple of recommendations that we had from staff. So I don't, I don't think we're, it's coming down too hard about not having this full-blown discussion tonight, when the staff is really, for the most part, taking the council's temperature on just how deep we want to get into this discussion. I think we should get into it deeply. And I think we should, you know, take a considerable amount of time to get a lot of that information that many of the council members have asked for, what other communities are doing, how they're utilizing them, how they measure success, and that may not be the same way we measure success. I hate to sound real old here, but, you know, the days when we used to be able to say, just to keep it a level playing field, if somebody wants to come here and do business, just let them pay for their fees and let them come in here and do business without getting anything. Well, I mean, that'd be great if it was like that, but you really can't do business like that anymore. I mean, we definitely would not have a lot of the things that we have here if we expected people just to come in and spend millions of their own dollars to do these things. And I'm not saying I necessarily like it, it's just the way it is. So we clearly aren't getting any help from, on an economic development side from the state. I mean, I would go so far as to say, this is not going to be earth-shattering to anybody, I would go so far as to say municipalities have to work even harder because of the state. Our state legislators are not doing anything to help small business. We're trying to develop a corner, one of the busiest traffic corners in our city, the corner of University and War Memorial. Used to have a beer distributor, used to have a very successful car dealership that paid, between them paid tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in sales taxes. And we can get no help from the state to get entrance, a second entrance into that property off of War Memorial Drive. And the staff, the traffic studies show it's not going to have any impact on that area. So you think I'm getting off track, but I'm not. That's economic development, too. IDOT and the state will not help us do that. It's costing us a lot of money. The state's working against our communities. The state's withholding a million dollars' worth of tax revenues for a handling fee, which they've always done. So this didn't start off as bash the state, but, you know, that's the situation we find ourselves in, in our communities. The things that we've always been able to rely on them as partners are going away. Now they're taking our money with them. So this is a very important issue. It's an extremely important issue. We just got to figure out how to use it right, in the right cases, at the right times. You know, I agree that, and I don't want to get really far in the weeds, because I'm a proponent, as well as others, of having a more extended conversation on this. And this discussion tonight isn't going to have any impact, I don't think, on what happens out at Westlake, but the length of time... out at Westlake, but the length of time, the SSA, Sales Tax SSA is in place, what the amount is, I think it should be specific to what are you going to do with that X percent over this period of time? What specifically do you want to do, and how long is it going to take to pay that off? So, it's not just a rolling SSA that they can just continue to spend off of and spend off of. And if it's successful and they want to come back and do another project, come on back to the council and ask for an extension on that SSA. Putting a 20- or 30-year limit out there, I think, is just asking it to be abused. But I would, you know, look at, and I was a big proponent of Louisville Slugger, and I'll just say right now, that the difference between Louisville Slugger and some sandwich shops is Louisville Slugger are bringing tens and tens of thousands of people to our community every weekend to play baseball. They're staying in those hotels, which are owned by the developer, and he's taxing his own customers, but they're not just coming here to play baseball and stay in his hotels. They're going to the shops at Grand Prairie, they're going to a lot of the other shops in town, they're going to the museum, they're going to the ballpark. They're going... Pardon me? Yeah, maybe so. So, you know, I think that we have to really think about what we're trying to encourage and what we're trying to restrict. And, you know, I am, for one, am a huge fan of what's been done on our riverfront this summer. We've seen more visitors to our riverfront this summer than I'll bet we have in maybe ever, because a group of people decided to invest money to bring quality entertainment on a regular basis. So, you know, what can we do to encourage that? What can we do to encourage that type of, you know, get people to come to our community, spend money in our community, maybe say, hey, this is a pretty cool place, I might want to live there, maybe move here to our community? So, those are the kinds of things that I think are important, Mr. Manager. I do think that the council have raised a number of really good questions. To me, at least, it shows a sincere willingness to have a more thoughtful, longer discussion, put more meat on the bones, if you will, and really do something that is good for our whole community. The biggest worry that I have on the Sales Tax SSAs right now, with basically no policy or no structure around it, is I don't know what keeps every other retail area of this city coming in and saying, me too, I want what they got. When we don't have a policy around it, it's harder to say, well, this is what we offer it for, these are the parameters, and this is what helps you qualify for it. So, I think that's a concern that we should keep our eye on.
With that said, Councilman Regenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'll be specific in asking you questions, Mr. Setti, even though I didn't answer all of your questions. I would like to see some additional information, specifically on best practices in neighboring communities. What are people within an hour drive of us doing? Also, I would like to see what about our aspirational cities? We've heard several people mention neighborhoods in Chicago. My favorite burrito store on Ashland has an SSA. They actually had a sign, Councilman, that's how I know that. But let's see what some of those aspirational communities use. Are they Sales Tax SSAs or Real Estate SSAs? And are they project-driven? And following up on what the mayor said, do they have to give us a checklist of, for the next 10 years, for the next five years, whatever it is, this is what we're going to accomplish with it? Or is it simply snow removal and flower planters, you know? So, let's see what the uses of the SSAs are, and then I think we'll be able to start to formulate a policy that isn't too wonkish. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rigerson.
Thank you. And to piggyback off what Councilman Regenbach said, I mean, even if you show some before-and-after pictures of what the areas were like before the SSAs were implemented and how they look now, maybe some numbers on what kind of business improvements from a financial standpoint they realized. And in addition, I'd like to see some, you know, you could put together a PowerPoint deck with what do the applications look like, what do the audits look like? I mean, I think that the SSAs that I'm familiar with, there's a lot of accountability, there's a lot of structure, and they're not single-business focused. And I think that's probably where we got off track. You know, our city seems to be very single-business focused, and we've done this even with TIFs, when TIFs were initially conceived to benefit an area, not just a single property. And it's, it kind of rubs people the wrong way, because businesses that are outside that property, you know, in other cities, they would be benefiting from the, you know, the benefits of the TIF. Now, we've got the entire city TIF, so that's kind of a moot point, but anyway, I would like to see some visual evidence, you know, photographs.
Thank you. Any further input on this? Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought I mentioned that Westlake Shopping Center, I don't know if they still do, but I know at one point in time, they had large signs up talking about what the SSA provides to that area, and we could probably ask Les Cohen to give us an example of that by a picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing no further lights. Mr. Manager, good feedback tonight. We'll look forward to your follow-up on this. We have a motion by Councilman Jensen to close the public hearing, seconded by Councilmember Ruckregel. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We are at new business.
Any new business to come before the council tonight? New business? Councilman Grab.
Manager Setti, I want to thank you and, of course, both managers, city manager and the Assistant City Manager, for taking the lead on putting out the employee survey, people who work for this city, and their opinions on what suggestions they might make as to what we could do to operate more efficiently. I think it's excellent that you've done this, and I think you're doing it at the right time, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Regenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to announce that on Thursday evening at 6 o'clock, Peoria Public Schools' student-led initiative, APSCO, is going to be holding a public meeting at the Peoria Stadium. They've put together a plan to put in a modern signage along War Memorial that would incorporate the traditional football that's been there for all the years. This is part of their long-range plan to help the school district as they make plans for the future of the stadium. So, this is an opportunity for the public to hear exactly what the new signage would look like. It is, this is a Peoria Public School Initiative, through the intergovernmental agreement we have with them, but the public's invited 6 o'clock at the stadium in the concession hallway this Thursday.
Thank you. Any other new business this evening? New business? Madam Clerk.
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Citizens to address the council. Please identify yourself, name and address, please, for the record, and we have a five-minute speaking limit. Up first is Mr. Williams, Charles Williams.
Okay. Good afternoon. You know, I know I'm a don't come down here. I've been mad as a wet hen. And I come down here, and you saying, you know, with all the stuff going on in this city, you want to be a diverse city. Now, I don't, I'm not a mayor, police chief, or state police, but I do have friends. President just wrote me today, just texted me, and I had something to do tonight. About 2:10 this afternoon, I called. I had a city manager office and said, I got a garbage trash I picked up. Talked to a lady. Within two minutes, we in a confrontation, said, I don't work for the city, I don't work for the PDC. You see, you guys, I don't get this. I don't work for the PDC. What if we got a store you don't know what to do? What if the youth called down and said, my dad is out of town, I need this going on? A 13-year-old. But this old sergeant know how to handle that, because he's well-trained, he's well-equipped, know how to do that. But white female, African-American man, confrontation, and that's why I'm telling, I told you earlier, I said, why do you need an Assistant City Manager in the city? You want to save money. I've always said, get rid of the city's manager. And I see right now, you don't need no city manager, because that's money that you can have for training. You need to train, you need to develop. That was a confrontation that Mr. William, a homeowner, that you talked about today, that I didn't need, Mr. Regan. Homeowner got to go with a confrontation in the city manager office. But I'm taking it, African-American confrontation, that's another confrontation. Charles William down here tonight, he could be in a meeting tonight in church, but I'm down here mad, angry, because me and the lady get into it. It's on my texts, so I've got it. Same thing with the city police. You say you only got three video cameras, the chief do, but you come to my house, we only got a problem, we got three cameras. All right, this is ridiculous. Do we need a police captain on duty? Yeah, you need a police captain, because some of them guys down there, city police, they put you in a spot, and you get to be friends with them. They don't tell you what to do. You need to grow and be leadership. I get a phone call from Jim Kelly up in the White House, say, hey, Charles, are you coming up? I don't have time. But I don't want to wear my feet on my shoulder. You've got to have leadership, because it's going to come back to bite you. Training, you don't have to have nobody come in and train, and a new police recruit don't need to be on no tabbing. When he get on the force, you tell him what to do. But five minutes, one of them old good old boys, they tell him what to do, he's drinking, he acting the food. And then you, Belf, you said the right thing for the video camera. I want to be part of that, where I can train you. I worked in jail for 25 years, so I want to be part of the video training. Put me in. But see, the thing about it, you guys, I wrote three of you, city council, right now. I said, when I had the problem with that, tie, back down here again with leadership, attitude. I go over to East Peoria, me and the mayor, we work over there, everything is so cool, they get along fine with me. You get over here, it's a confrontation. All I see is Sandberg dead, all the jobs, people works over here, but the business is going over there. Because you know what they say to me? We can't get along with nobody in Peoria. Attitude, and guess what? That we got one a day. Attitude from the city manager office. I'm upset, because that shit never happened. That shit never happened. That's unprofessional. No leadership. So, we going to keep this stuff going on? A diverse city? No, you got a long ways to go. You know, I came from South Georgia, but guess what? I've seen a lot of stuff in my young days, military training. I got people want to come here. Doug Opah said, you know what? You know Caterpillar getting ready to leave? I kind of think that, you know, you got to look at what Caterpillar want to go, because I don't think I want to have my big shot people around here, you acting like this. I want to put peoples with professionalism. Mr. William, we need to talk about this here. But nobody want to come in, you keep on treating African-Americans like this here. Ain't nobody going to come in this city, you keep this mess up. This don't look good. And then every time I write you, you don't write back. That's old Jim Crow stuff. You write a letter to the mayor, I don't care if I write a letter to the military, you write me back. You write a letter to the chief of police, you write me back. You called a captain, you supposed to get back to me. You don't just sit down and think you more than somebody, you write back to that man. That's leadership. Mr. William cannot hear me, I'm going to talk to you. If you ain't got leadership, you ain't going to have leadership. John Kelly run the White House, but he leadership. Thank you.
Joan Kopp.
Thank you. No comment tonight at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Jeremy Coleman.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeremy Coleman. I'm on the Board of Directors for ACOSI and Bike Peoria. I have a small speech to give you here. On behalf of Bike Peoria and cyclists within our city, we thank you for adopting ordinances to ensure the protection of cyclists in the event of left turn and right turn incidents, otherwise known as left hook and right hook, as well as bringing local ordinance into line with the statewide three-foot safe passing law. As we look, as we work forward, as we look toward a more bike-friendly Peoria, clarity in legislation and policy is critical to effective education and ultimately will drive the development of a more multimodal infrastructure. This is just the beginning. Many of our members do not have the luxury of choosing to cycle. Biking is their primary mode of transit. For these people, most, for these people, this policy may be in their life or their livelihood. As we leave tonight, let us commit to being mindful of the ways people choose to navigate our city, and remember that no matter bike or car, everyone deserves to get home safely. Thank you again for your service, and we look forward to the work ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Chama St. Louis.
My name is Chama St. Louis, and it's been a while. I've been trying to stay away from the council, because usually when I come up here, it's never anything good that I have to say. So, I feel like we spent a lot of time discussing hot dogs, and I kind of feel like something's off, when we spend that much time discussing hot dogs or this restaurant, and we have a crisis going on in our city. We had a citywide initiative to figure out how can we improve the conditions in the black community when the 24/7 Wall Street report was released. We had about 400 or some odd people show up to these meetings, all ready to engage in a solution-based dialogue. I'm sure you all remember that, those meetings. I went to a couple. I know there's a few people in the room who were also in attendance at those meetings. So, I'm just wondering, where's the follow-through on those meetings? What measures are or were implemented to rectify the disparity that exists between the races? I know we use District One City Councilwoman as the face for those meetings, but I still haven't seen the follow-through specifically in District One. And I'm finding it hard to believe that we didn't just take, or you guys didn't just take, a play from the white supremacy playbook and use a face that looks like ours to pacify a situation versus actually doing something about it to ensure your reelection. I'm sure if there were white boys dropping like flies in District Four and Five, we'd have citywide initiatives to cut down on violence, programs to implement geared towards keeping kids off the street, we'd invest millions of dollars to ensure safe communities. Instead, you all choose to segregate yourselves from people who promise, who you promise safer communities, and those are the people that you're supposed to be representing. If you will take a moment and look at the fundamental differences between crime-ridden communities and those with virtually no crime, you will see things like better housing, access to opportunity, financially-stable families, better school funding, ample local businesses and resources. And I really believe that Peoria is the tell of two cities. This is why a Black Lives Matter structure is important here in this city. It's not about just standing up against... It's not about just standing up against police brutality. That's only one element of Black Lives Matter. And I think it's the element that gets more media sensationalism. But it's really about saving black lives. Somebody has to be responsible for what goes on with black people here in this city. Because clearly, you guys have no problem missing the mark over and over and over again, and pretending like you're working hard to make improvements in the black community. I don't have any personal issues against anyone who sits on the council. So I want to make that very clear. I don't have a personal issue against anyone who sits on the council. However, my soul will not let me rest until I speak for those who cannot speak for themselves and who cannot represent themselves. I am tired and I am exhausted with this council. And I'm exhausted with the leadership in this city. This is exactly what happens when you have only two representatives at the table when decisions are being made, and no representatives who adequately represent you. And maybe you're doing your very, your very best. Maybe you're doing the best that you can do within your abilities. And I cannot fault you for that. But if silence when you have a police-involved shooting, the death of Eddie Russell Jr., if silence when you have children who are missing, such as Alexis Camry and Lyric Brown, a Lyric who has been missing for, since August, and Alexis who has now been missing for eighteen days, and neither of those parents can get detectives to call them back. To me, that's a problem. We've had our ninth homicide, rest in peace, Chi-Priest Davis. We've had...
Chama, your time... Chama? Chama, your time has expired. Petey Randall? Petey Randall?
Petey Randall, she spoke about my child, Lyric Brown, along with the other child that's missing. I done all I can do. I talked to Sid, I appreciate you. I talked to several other people, I appreciate you. One thing I won't appreciate is the Peoria Police Department. I'm gonna tell you, I was a leader. And know what? I was a good follower behind being a leader. I'm not afraid to say it on TV, vice versa. Yes, that was me. Gave up that life, serve God. How can you lead if you don't even be a leader? You don't even put the right people in position. My daughter been missing since eight, fifteen, seventeen. I had to make a police report on ten, nine, seventeen, when I made it on the fifteenth, the sixteenth to be exact. That's bad. You have Anita, all these children. My daughter sixteen, it's nothing you could do. I show you on text, well, my daughter just text me, "Dad, take it off Facebook, I love you, but I'll kill myself." Do you care? You don't care. But put yourself in my position as a black man, forty-eight years old, on the South End, stay across the street from NAACP. And you ain't did nothing. You ain't did nothing to Peoria Police Department. I'm tired hearing about a body cam. Listen, I sacrificed my body. I'm gonna tell you the truth. It hurts to tell the truth. Look up here, just look. Look in that circle, look in that circle, and look at that corner. Black lives do matter. Look, just look around. I'm just telling you the truth. The truth, it's known. Look, look in this, oh, look, just look. Just look. What you see, that's what you get. You talking about a hot dog, or... Man, I don't give a hoot about a hot dog. I don't care about none of that. What I do care about, these children, these little girls coming up missing? And all that, and y'all talking about a body cam and putting a blinker or whatever on... Man, what is you gonna do about my daughter? Now you put yourself in my situation as the chief of police. And know what? I, her phone is undermined, right? Know what you would do? You would track her down. But you don't give a damn about me. I had to go through Google, I had to find my phone, I had to pay a bill. Okay, I got two minutes. You said enough. I can't say enough, because y'all ain't did enough. The truth is the truth. My brother Minnesota, know what? I'm tired, forty years old. It's easy to commit a crime. You could turn all the guns in, in the world, you could do everything you do, find a bag of bullets, you could do everything you do, you don't give a damn. I tell you, Mayor, you good man. You a man of God. But some people just don't believe it. Who do you really follow? Because you get a paycheck and then you go to your wife and your kids. You go on Grand V Drive, how many times you see the police circle on Grand V Drive? Go on the South End. And look at it, all day long. You sit there and you patrol. That what you do. You know the definition of every word I'm saying. I'm tired. So when we put the law in our own hands, know what we do? We could convict it. I'm a convicted felon. Know what? Ain't been a felon in years, but I'm still marked, known gang chief. How can I take it off my back and I still go down there, you still put me in the computer, known gang chief? Red flag. And know what you would tell me? Man, I'm gonna fix it. And y'all ain't did it yet. Y'all can't even fix your own problem, how you gonna fix ours? That's just the truth. That's the truth. You don't even understand the truth. Until you understand who you are, that's just the truth. My time is up, twenty-nine seconds, whatever it is, I'm tired of it. So when you put black men like me on the streets, trying to help little girls, little boys, what do you get? You get trouble. You get trouble. Y'all ask for trouble. I'm not, I'm not afraid to say it. I never been afraid to voice my opinion about anything. When I put my baby on, out there on Facebook and say, "I love..." That's what it is. I love my child, I like my child. That's freedom. Talk what you want to talk, say what you want to say. You give a damn.
April Scott.
My name is April Scott. I have a missing daughter, Alexis Scott. Her Facebook name is Alexis Camry. Want to say hi to everybody, first of all. Mayor Artis, I've known you for awhile, not personally, but interactions through District 150. I'm also an employee of District 150, and I've been with District 150 nineteen, almost twenty years. First, I'd like to say thank you for what's being done, but I don't feel like it's being done enough. Enough is being done to help me. My daughter went missing September twenty-third. She went to a house party, is my understanding. And there's no proof that she ever left the address, that she went where the party was. She went over on Richmond Avenue. There's different times. I've talked to Detective Rogers, I've talked to Detective McDaniels. And they seem to believe the witnesses, whichever one they choose to believe at the time. But you can't, they're saying everybody has the same time that she left. Well, no. I've got inboxes of different times, they personally given me, I've offered my cellphone as proof of what they said to me. They've given them different times. There's not enough evidence, is what I'm being told, to pin anybody. Well, I found the link. And it's not being taken serious. I've given evidence, or information that I've had to them, I get no response back. I've met with them to give them everything I know, different times. And I, I'm getting promised to call back, I don't get them. I don't understand that. I've been told they're taking the dogs out to sniff the area, but nobody ever came to me for a piece of her clothing to see if she was even still alive. You'd rather take Alkaniz, why wait? It took a whole week for it to even hit the media that she was missing. That gave them enough time to clean up whatever happened. That's not okay. This, this cannot be happening. I was told the sergeant that passed the information from the police officer who wrote the report, gave it to a detective that was off for three days. And then he himself, the sergeant who passed the information on to the off-duty detective for three days, him, he himself was off for a whole week. So there was no follow-up of what he gave to the detective to see if anything was being done. That was a whole time to cover all evidence that you needed at a house party. This house party went on supposedly from eleven at night to eight o'clock in the morning. I don't understand it. I've been young, I've been to parties before I came back, I'm fifty years old. What party do you go to in Peoria that you can't come back? It could be your kids, it could be your grandkids. You don't know what our kids are off into. The things that my daughter was into, I didn't even know about until now. All her friends knew. I knew nothing. They knew somebody was looking for her, I knew nothing. I've given what I do know to the detectives. I don't feel like anybody's listening to me. It's too long now. It's too much time done past that I'm worried now that it's gonna become a cold case. Nobody cares. I still got her two-year-old kid. I can't even go to work and face the students I work with every day at Manuel, because they're running to me. I'm sorry, Ms. Scott, I don't know what to do to help you, Ms. Scott. The staff are doing the same thing, and I love them all, but I can't take that right now, because I don't want to believe my daughter is gone from this earth. I don't want to believe that everybody waited too long to get involved in this case, and my daughter is gone, meaning gone away. I can't even face the fact that this could even be a possibility in the city that I spent over half my life in service to other people's kids, and this is happening to my child. The kids I try to save in the community down at Manuel, I give my heart to. When I go to work, I give a hundred, when I come home, I give a hundred. I can't believe this is happening, honest to God. We teach our kids differently at Manuel, that the community cares. All you got to do is go to school, do the best you can, get good grades, graduate, life will be hunky-dory. I'm living it, it's not... I don't understand that. I'm not blaming any one person. There is a fault, there's faults in our system, I can tell you that. I'm experiencing it myself, never thought I'd be here. I'm waking up to a nightmare every day. I go to her bed, she's not there. It's reliving the same thing over and over again. It's unbelievable. I would not wish this on anybody. Nobody, nobody should have to go through this. It shouldn't take this long to get things rolling, be constantly calling and not getting any information back. I need help. My daughter needs help. Her two-year-old son needs help. I can't do this again. I just got done raising three kids. I got one left who can't even go to school because of me being afraid that something would happen to him. I have one son, two daughters. One of them doesn't even live in this state, the other one's missing. I got a son, I can't send him to school. He's a junior. I don't feel safe sending him to school. None of these circumstances, everybody is related to everybody, I don't know who's who. Everybody right now is suspected.
Kiri Hayes.
Start my time, please. Chief Mitchell Stan said in a prepared statement that openness is the key. He went on to say that complete transparency within our community and upholding the integrity of the investigation are paramount for the Peoria Police Department. Do you want to know what I find paramount to our community? It's honestly having leaders that uphold the integrity of their elected communal leadership roles. Community leaders that understand that leading a community of mixed races, genders, and issues require community involvement. I have yet to see any one of you, especially you, Mr. Mayor, address publicly the recent spike of violence, the recent immoral actions, the racial undertone of this city, and the recent incompetence of the police department. This city has remained the same despite consistent research and lackadaisical effort of this council to correct the racial disparity issues. The members of this council seem to be so out of touch with their constituents that it's actually embarrassing. I am ashamed to say that I have actually sat down and have conversations with some of you guys on a personal note. It is really shameful. What's even worse is that the local thugs in blue, better known as our Peoria Police Department, were getting away with trumping charges and planning evidence until now, where we have a young man that was shot down in the middle of broad daylight eighteen-plus times in front of his mother, using her voice to bring her son out of the home. Now, you know, people say, "Okay, well, this guy was a bank robber." He was, he robbed the bank, I don't dispute that. But you guys knew that he had mental health issues? Do you not have adequate training to deal with people who have mental health issues? This is a public safety concern. What makes it okay for us to shoot down a mentally disabled person in the streets and not call in less lethal? What kind of city example are we setting for other cities? What kind of city example are we setting for our own city? And what do you think that message says to people who have skin tone that looks like mine? Just because you're black, you're a threat? Just because you're African-American male that's had police to your home thirty-plus times because they know that you have a mental health issue? They don't call in ERS to try to talk down? They don't call in the FBI to try to talk down? They just shoot the man eighteen times in front of his mom? Really? This is what you guys call leadership? I am ashamed. And then you sit here for forty-five minutes talking about portillos? You know what, like Mr. Randall says, don't I give a damn about portillos? Or where it comes in and out? Or where it sits in the city? Or if it's across the street from Sonics? Who gives a shit? You people should be caring about all the black kids that are going to jail? The ones that are getting killed? The women that are coming up missing? The young teenage kids that don't come home at night? It's not just young girls, there's two or three young boys missing too. You don't think that we know about this? People call us all the time with issues. Why are they calling me and not you? Because I return their calls? It's ridiculous. I'm going to ask that you step into the roles that we put you in, because it's your job to lead this city, and you're doing a very piss-four job. I'm done.
Amarel Samne.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and respected councilmen and women. Amarel Samne, 3922 North Columbus Avenue, Peoria, 61614. A few issues I just really wanted to second. um, you know, the concern of the previous speaker about the recent shots. You know, earlier today, I had a commission meeting, uh, you know, as a member of Mayor's Advisory Committee on, uh, you know, for citizens with disability. We were discussing earlier, uh, the recent shootings, and, uh, we were very concerned as the commission that the city council assigned to really help out our Peoriaan citizens or fellow citizens with disabilities. And we are still, again, I'm not here representing my, um, you know, my, um, co-commissioners on that commission because we have decided to wait until the results are finalized and we cannot have, um, a clear report from the police because there are, we've been hearing a few different things about, uh, you know, the, you know, the person that was shot, whether he was warned, whether he wasn't. But regardless, um, I'm waiting eagerly to, um, you know, to hear the results and the final report by the police department to see, uh, you know, whether there was any, anything that could have been done on behalf of Peoria Police to prevent, uh, you know, shooting or fatally shooting, um, a disabled person. Second issue, you know, I, there's a lot of talks about giving incentives to businesses who are moving in town. And I was reading a few weeks ago, um, Amazon, uh, and their, you know, their search for a second headquarters, which will be, you know, we're talking about billions of dollars being invested. And obviously, that's a long shot for Peoria, unfortunately. But regardless, the whole concept of offering incentives for business, you know, I've, I've talked about, um, you know, that concept several times. I've quoted the example of Austin, Texas. I've mentioned the example, uh, then, the very thriving city globally, Dubai. And recently, I was in Atlanta, a couple of weeks ago. And during my visit, Georgia was named for the fourth consecutive year, fourth consecutive year. They were, we're talking about four years in a row. They were named to be the top, top state nationwide for attracting businesses. And when I, when I was there, I did a lot of research. I talked to officials. I, you know, I did a lot of digging. Why four years? And what are they doing differently than Illinois? And I found out that, you know, there's a lot of leniency when it comes to many, many laws, besides incentives, of course, that they give to businesses. But there's a lot of leniency when, when it comes to, uh, you know... And again, this is, again, I'm, I'm not addressing maybe here, maybe, maybe this should be addressed in Springfield. But for example, the right to work, the right to work state makes a huge difference. Am I for it or against it? That needs some, needs some, uh, further research, and it needs, um, you need to have to weigh the pros and the cons of such serious stuff. I'm not saying that this is something that could be done by City Peoria, but I applaud you for even discussing, because I've been following, you know, the, uh, the recent incentives that we're trying to give to local businesses to move into town. I, I'm really for that, and I definitely, I believe that we should, as a city council, do as much as we can to attract businesses to move into our town and stop the flow of businesses out of Illinois and stop the flow of businesses out of Peoria to the other, um, you know, bank. Uh, I'm talking about the eastern bank of Illinois River, to East Peoria and Tazewell County. So I think it's really time to take this issue very seriously. Again, I second the, the efforts and the concern for Alexis Scott. And my heart, my heart and soul goes out to her family. Uh, you know, it's, it's very sad to see, um, such events happening in our city. I've personally been trying to help as much as I could in the search of finding Alexis Scott, and hopefully she'll come back soon. We pray and hope that her family, um, you know, will, will see her again, safe and sound and in the best health and condition. Amen. Um, last, I'd like to conclude by, um, inviting all of you, and I do have actually cards of invitation here. The Islamic Center of Peoria is having, um, their annual open house. It's a barbecue and an open house this Saturday. This Saturday. It's between twelve noon to four PM. Twelve noon to four PM. And if you are interested, please ask me for one of these cards and, um, do your RSVP online, and it will be-
Mr. Sierra.
Sabina Sierra, Seventeen O Eight South Stanley on the South Side. I was gonna do a little criticizing myself, but a different subject. When I hear these people, uh, that, uh, they, uh, sound more mad and angry than, um, than, uh, how would I say? They say they're not getting, taken care of. You know, we have, we have a program, Police and Community Relations, uh, Commission, of which I'm a member. You should, uh, if you have a complaint, you should, uh, fill out a, a, uh, a form that you'd like to speak in front of, uh, this commission. But not in anger, you know? You should come and see what, uh, what, uh, your feelings are, and, uh, uh, we take that in consideration, and then we, uh, if we have something that we can, uh, suggest to the police department, then we'll do it. But when you, when you, uh, keep, uh, being angry and complaining, it isn't gonna get you anyplace, you know what I mean? You have to, um, and I mean, I, I can realize how you feel and all that, but, um, I'm just saying you should cool down a little bit and go through this process. And, uh, I, I too, you know, you, you complain about the, uh, our police department, which I, uh, support a hundred percent. But, uh, I think the leadership of the black community should be, uh, I want to know what they're doing to help, uh, better the, uh, uh, situations that's going on, you know? It's sad, you know? You talk about, uh, now... I was born and raised in this town. It's gonna be eighty-six years. And, uh, I've never seen it so bad as it is now. It never was like that, you know? And, uh, uh, I'm saddened that, that it's gone the way it is now. That, and, uh, sometimes by our actions, we, uh, uh, kind of, uh, put, uh, hate into our young people. We're trying to raise our young, these young minorities to be, uh, good and successful citizens. But when they hear some of this stuff, they might get a little, uh, frightened and angry, and they might take, change their attitude. But we're, this community wants everybody to, to do their best and be happy and try to improve themselves so, um, they can be successful in whatever they want to do. But, uh, I, um, won't keep you much longer, and, uh, but, uh, I, uh, will issue my complaints next. Maybe I'll get a chance to do that, the, the next, um, meeting we have here. So, uh, let's get together and, and try to be happy. Thank you.
Uh, we have an executive session?
Mr. Corporation Counsel.
Yes, Your Honor, a motion would be appropriate pursuant to, um, Section 2C-11 of the Opening Meetings Act, which exempts discussions relative to pending litigation, as well as, um, 2C-21, which exempts discussions relative to the approval of previously closed executive session minutes.
Okay, we need a motion to go into executive session. Councilman Oiler, seconded, Councilman Ruck Regal, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously, and we have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Sears, seconded by Councilman Riggenbach. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel Twenty-two, and this meeting is adjourned.